Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that our district clerk please us in the pledge.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. May I have a motion, please, that the agenda of March 4th, 2014 be approved as submitted? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please, that the board approve the consent agenda as listed? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Treasurer's report. In your packet is the treasurer's report for the month of December 2013. May I have a motion, please, that the treasurer's report, which includes the cash report, general fund cash report, general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue, and expense budget report for the month ending December 31st, 2013, be approved? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. We have no special reports that I know of this evening. All right. And visitor speaking time. We have no indication that anybody wants to address the board. And our student representative is not here this evening because she is in a second round of a competition, I believe, so we wish her good luck. So we move on to the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. We have, we will have our student and staff honors. We've also got some interesting information regarding our current capital projects, giving an update of where we are with those, looking now and a little bit in the future. And we're going to talk briefly about the veterans' tax exemption. And we are going to spend a lot of time going over instructional budget proposal for the 2014-15 budget, and some progress on the tax cap as well. We'll talk about that. And we have a donation. Our science olympiad competition at the Bay Trail, our science olympiad teams finished second, seventh, and 12th out of 23 teams at the regional competition held over winter break. And the three teams took medals in 25 events, and 28 students earned at least one medal. A strong performance at the competition earned Bay Trail a trip to the New York State Tournament, which will be held in April. Very exciting to see that. PTA Reflections, this is a wonderful program supported by our PTAs. The works of the following students have been selected by the Genesee Valley PTA to continue on to the New York State level of the PTA Reflections competition. At Bay Trail, we had Mary Brophy with photography, Rachel Peterson in photography. At Cobble, so we had Madison Long in the visual arts, Leonardo Ferguel in film production, Sophie Lee in film production, Harris Hill, Nora Zetchka in film production and music competition, but those are elementary school students, Gabriel Harper in photography, Sophia Graves in literature, Madeline Graves in literature, Kaylee Deloria in dance choreography. And at Penfield High School, Rebecca Murray in literature, Caroline Rutten in dance choreography. Way to go. I remember you talking about when she was working on that. Very exciting, great, creative students. And now we're at our capital project update. It'll be interesting to find out what we have happening and what's coming up.
I'm going to ask Gary Hoffman of Campus Construction and Vic Thomaselli of SEI Design to come up. They'll be presenting tonight. Campus Construction, as you all know, I think, are the district's construction managers and SEI design, the district's architects. So, Steve, if I can get the clicker, I'll hand it over.
Yeah. Good evening. I'm Gary.
Vic Thomaselli, SEI Design Group.
Good evening.
We're here this evening to update you on the capital project. Vic will start out with the Indian Landing summary, and then I'll follow through with the Scribner Entrance, roof, and security in high school projects.
Well, thank you again for having us here tonight. I think you're all aware that Indian Landing, there has been an issue identified with the sanitary sewer. You know, you folks approved or declared the project an emergency project back in November. But there have been various blockages that were identified. The fiber optic inspection was done and found that the whole line is in poor condition. And it's all the original construction from 1947. So, you know, we're looking into moving forward with the capital project to replace that sewer line. And the district has contacted SED about its being declared an emergency project and has requested some expedited SED review. Where we are, we have solicited proposals for a surveyor to come out and do some survey work. They're scheduled right now for toward the end of this month, third week of this month, to come out and do the survey. Once that's done, work can begin, design work can begin on the exterior routing of that sewer and the connections, various connection points and what needs to be done. We have begun investigative work inside the building, down in the crawl space, and identifying, you know, where the lines are and where they go and what needs to be, you know, what needs to be reconnected and redirected inside the building. And then, as I said, once the survey work is done on the outside, then we can move forward with design of the exterior sewer work. We are proposing to complete the drawings, submit them to the state, and have approval in April of this year. And the fact of the matter is, if the project is declared an emergency project, you don't need to wait for SED formal approval before you can move forward. That, you know, once it has been submitted, then you can basically go forward with the bidding and ultimately construction. So we're looking to award bids in May and then start construction once school gets out beginning of July. And it's looking like our best estimate right now is that it's about a four-week lead, you know, four-week construction period to do that work. And during that time, basically, there will be no sanitary sewer connection to the building. So just need to be aware of that, that the building needs to be not occupied or that the water and sewer needs not to be used.
And if I could just add into that, we offered, our initial plan was to move the 12-month staff, the principal and the 12-month support staff and so on, to another building during the construction, during that four-week period. They've been asked a couple times, and they've indicated pretty strongly they'd like to stay. So that means we'll be providing sort of blue box facilities for them. So we'll be getting through.
Continuing on, we'll speak to the Scribner Entry and Bay Trail Transformer Project, as you know, that was approved by the voters back on May 15th, 2012. SED did approve that project in October of last fall. We did go out to bid right away, and bids were awarded in November. Currently, we're working on the contractor's middles, preparing schedules, shop drawings, getting the samples approved. Two notable items are the transformer and switchgear, which were, had some significant lead times. The switchgear has been submitted on, and the transformer was received today. So we're on track. We're going to be fine. And we expect to start construction in July. I'm comfortable with the schedule, July through October, and we should be wrapped up. There will be some impact to the building. There won't be any electricity during that period, probably in July, is what I'm anticipating right now for, if I go on record, two to three weeks, and we might be down without power because the switchgear and transformer, which runs the power for that building, will be out of commission as we swap that out with the new equipment. We have been working, have had many meetings with the town in Penfield, coordinating their needs, because the, I guess, typically, they use that building in the summer. So the town rec has been meeting with us at ROACM meetings and working that out. Entrance work extends into 2014 and '15. That is the Scribner, new Scribner Entrance, Secure Entrance. And we've already worked out with the district through Allen's office, contractor staging, so we won't be interrupting school. There won't be interruption at all, so as we phase out of there in the fall. And we've already had discussions with the principal over there and worked out logistically where he'll be positioned and his staff for the summer as we displace him for that entrance Scribner Road, oh, sorry, Scribner Roof and Bay Trail Gym Repairs was approved in May of 2013, submitted to SED in September. Right now, we're anticipating an approval from SED around April, but please don't quote us on that. We can't, we can only push so hard. And so we're optimistic, guardedly, that we'll get approval in April. We had discussions at our LSO ACM, what is our drop dead date for approval on SED and still be able to work this summer? Collectively, we, as a group, came to the common consensus that April 30th is really our drop dead date in order for us to have approval from SED at that time and still be able to start work this summer. If SED goes into May or June, it's not feasible to do work this summer. It takes four to six weeks to bid, award, then you've got to do middles, and it just wouldn't be time, practically speaking. Challenges associated with the Scribner Roof and Bay Trail Gym Repairs include the gym work can't be, all the work that has to be done there just simply can't be done in one summer. So we've been discussing with the principal, with Pete Chambo, with Alan McNiff, what that impact could be and how we could make provisions to maintain student safety and student program and still get the work done. We've been working on identifying some swing space and the summer gym use. The current plan is to move usage to the high school, and if delayed into the fall, we may have some possible conflict with the 2015 high school gym renovations. That still has to be played out yet. We're still working on that one. Tentative, get, yeah, Scribner, okay, yeah. The security project, voter approval was just recently, in February, as you know. SEI is now working on the design. We anticipate completing that design work by November, going to SED. So it would be spring of 2015 approval, construction commencing in June, going through December of next year. One more. High school gym and field lights project, again, recently approved. Design is underway, anticipating completion around August of 2014, goes to SED. Again, we're looking at a February 2015 review. They're running six to seven months right now in reviews. And construction would be in April and go through October. Your first use of the fields would be November, so it would be the fall of 2015. Any questions? It was a lot, I know, I'm sorry.
Thank you. This was really good, especially, you know, a lot of it was covered also by Allen, not the information you have, but he showed us a lot of what you presented about, like, you know, the sewer problem at Indian Landing, or, you know, the gym in Bay Trail, all of that kind of stuff, when you were touring the building. So that was really great. So thank you for additional information here for us. Barb?
If you already answered this question, I apologize, but when there's no electricity at Bay Trail for the transformer thing, but Scribner can stay open?
No.
No.
So everybody's moving out?
It's affected, yes.
Okay.
Winton's affected as well, and his crew.
Right. So Scribner and Bay Trail, the plan is to move both Winton, again, we probably could have been more explicit on that slide. So the staff, the Bay Trail staff that's there 12 months, so Winton and his support staff, as well as Scribner, are going to have to move to the high school during that construction period.
But the Indian Landing people are choosing to stay with their blue commodes?
It's a shorter period of time, and, but yes, you are correct.
So maybe we can move everybody to the blue commodes?
(laugh) Short, blue box. Shorter period of time, and also during the time that Bay Trail and Scribner are without power, they're also without computer service, the servers go down, fire safety, fire alarm, that kind of thing. So we really can't have them in the building during that.
Mark?
I have two questions. One, regarding the sewers, what kinds of damage or impact will be on the building itself when they replace the sewers? Will that impact the building? Do we have to dig up the floors? What will we have to do for that?
No, there's a crawl space, you know, under the lowest level, that all the pipes run in that crawl space. So all the work will be done, you know, within the building in the crawl space, and then outside of the building, obviously, you know, trenching and whatnot.
And the crawl space is a dirt floor.
Okay. And the other one is regarding the field lights. When we get into the last, the last part of the construction, will the fields still be available for use while the lights are being installed? I mean, the lights will be available till November?
I think so, yes, yes.
Will still be able to use the fields?
Yes.
Thank you.
John?
I was curious, hopefully we can get another 65 years out of that sewer, the new one that goes in. What, is there a big size differential compared to 1947 to today in that sewer?
As far as the diameter of pipe, you mean? I don't know that there's, I'm sure codes have changed and sizes have increased, but, you know, I think the building load, you know, the building's been expanded and the building load has changed some, but I'm not sure, you know, what we're replacing it with yet. You know, we haven't gotten that deep into the design yet, but...
I was curious, because we have expanded that
Right.
...a lot since then, so I was just curious if the standard had changed. Thanks.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? All right, you talked about possible delay if the project is not, you know, that we're still waiting for approval.
Right.
I hate to ask the question, but do we have a Plan B?
Plan B would be to look at probably doing it, if I could, and I've got to work this out with the district, is if we could do work during the school year. If not, then it would have to be pushed out to 2015. We would do it, it would be tracking at the same time as the field lights and security project would.
And the challenge, of course, with that is then, for Pete Chambo, who does have summer gym use, as well as the town rec programs that are heavy gym users, we'd have no availability of high school gym, because it would be under construction, and Bay Trail at the same time. So that's really not a desirable outcome. That's, at this point, I think, in terms of all the scheduling challenges and issues you saw, it's, that's the biggest worry. If we get SED approval by April 30th and are able to get that bid together, it would be ideal to be able to do the gym work at the same time that Bay Trail was down for the transformer. Because then, you know, you're concentrating everything in that single summer. If the gym leaks over into the following year, then there's the potential conflict. And with no gym space, nobody's happy about that. But certainly, there are challenges with doing work during the course of the school year. If the gym's down during the school year, how does Bay Trail handle PE, those required courses and so on? So we're working on it. We spent a lot of time at the last meeting. We'll work on it until we get it figured out. But we don't have, I guess Plan B is in progress. And it also depends on timing, you know, some, timing of some things beyond our control. They could approve tomorrow. It's unlikely, but they could.
All right.
The other thing is timing on bids. And typically, we tend to recommend not bidding May, June. May can be okay, it's questionable, but anything beyond that, then you're getting into where the market is going to be higher priced. Everybody's working, it's summer.
Okay.
It just gets expensive. So then we typically would say to you, better to wait until fall, let school get open, and then we'll go back out and we'll bid it in September, October, when the work is, when that big slug of work is behind people and they're hungry again.
Okay. And my other question is, first use of fields, November 2015. So that means the first people really who will get to use the light at fields are going to be spring sports of 2016, because by November, then fall season is almost over. Am I correct? So is that a guess that you have there?
I'm being conservative.
Okay.
I'm being conservative, because one of the things, I don't control SED and I don't control the weather.
Okay.
So it's weather dependent, some of that work, so I'm being conservative. If I can do better, I certainly will.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I'm sure you keep us posted on the progress
Absolutely.
...and especially how SED is doing with all those approvals. All right, thank you.
We have gotten architectural comments on the Scribner Roof and Bay Trail Gym Project, and we're awaiting the mechanical, electrical plumbing comments. So they tend to be, you know, two months behind the architectural review, and it's been a couple weeks since we've gotten the architectural review. So, you know, it's sort of falling in the line, but it's still, you know, it will probably have been eight, close to eight months, I think, by the time we do get approval.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming this evening and giving us this
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
And answering our questions.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next we have our tentative schedule for the veterans' exemption, and Mark, you're going to fill us in on...
Thank you. Just wanted to touch base and get sort of on the board's agenda and into the planning process, some conversation around the board process for decision-making about the veterans' exemption. As you recall, it was adopted by the state legislature and then signed by the governor too late for us to do anything for this particular budget cycle. But we do need to, I think, be expeditious to get it into planning and process for next year. So what I anticipate, what I've sketched out here and what I think we need to consider is that by schedule, I mean this schedule, that we consider this over the course of the next several weeks, think about what communications we need to make, and then sort of adopt and begin to strategize around a schedule for this. So, you know, in April, you know, the, as of March 1st, the roles are final with current data, this year's current data, the 2014 data on exemptions. We should, we would begin to plan on gathering that countywide, really, because this affects all school districts. And we need to get that most current information on the existing amount of exemptions, because we'll use that data. Who, what veterans exist, who has an exemption, what levels of disability and so on, who served in combat zones, those kinds of details that we can use to generate estimates of impact. Because as you know, this doesn't change, this law doesn't change the amount that the school district collects, it simply changes who pays it. So it shifts the money around, and we need to be able to generate a good and credible estimate of those impacts. So we begin gathering that data in April. You know, May and June comes quickly. Obviously, over the summer, it's not a good time to communicate, we know that. So we, what we thought we would do is begin in September with a newsletter article that talked about the impacts, talked about the decision points, followed that up with an online survey, scheduled our public hearing, because there is a required public hearing sometime in October, and then sometime in November for a board decision. That allows plenty of time for communication, both to the public and to the assessors. And it also allows any, any estimates of impact to be sort of calculated into our estimates and budget process as we move forward, because it could have, you know, an impact as we get to this time of year and start to talk about rates and who pays. You know, you want to be able to include those changes as well. The one thing that I think we need to have some conversation or some thought about is the timing of that online survey. Does that, I think it should happen after the newspaper article? Should it happen after the hearing or before the hearing? I, you know, this is a draft, there's no magic to this, but I just wanted to set some stakes in the ground and get the idea that we would be done by November, sort of in the board's planning.
Thank you, Mark. Board members, any questions or comments? Yes, Catherine?
I have a question, Mark. Do you know, this is a veterans' exemption, regardless of disability, do you just need to be?
Correct, you need to be a veteran.
Okay, you don't have to be disabled?
Right, correct, no, correct.
Okay, so that's the only, as far as you know, that's the only criteria for this exemption?
Veteran serving during a time of war. So there are, there are defined in the law periods of conflict. So that's, that's sort of the gateway. You have to be a veteran, you have to have served during a time of war. If you served in a combat area, then there's an additional level of exemption. And if you are disabled, there's an additional level of exemption. So it's sort of a multi-part tiered exemption.
Okay, and that's already preset as to what those requirements are?
The level, the requirements are set.
Okay.
The levels of exemption, there's a variety of levels of exemption that the board could adopt.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next is some conversation, our presentation of the instructional budget. As you know, we always begin with a reflection on the board's overall goals for the school year. And clearly, this piece of the budget, the largest piece, the largest single presentation piece, has to do clearly with academic achievement and excellence. It is the instructional core of our, of our budget. So we've gone through so far presentations on administration, the Board of Education, the special areas of the budget and the capital program. Tonight, we're looking at regular school teaching, occupational education, libraries, computer services, clubs, and sports. And that composes a third of our budget. As you can see here, the single largest slice of the pie are those in the classroom, regular education activities. Overall, that portion of the budget is up by 2%. That is about a half million dollars, so $536,000 on a $27 million for a 2 point, for a 2% overall increase. Significantly changing in that budget, and you'll see this as we go through, there are no proposed staffing increases. There is, the only change in terms of staffing from budget to budget is 3% FTE is included for unallocated. There is an increase contained in this budget in the areas of textbooks and substitute teacher salaries. Both of those, interestingly, sort of connected to the Regents Reform Initiative. So the textbooks are increasing to include the, an additional amount for consumables based on our new adoptions of the recent math program. And substitute teacher salaries are driven in part by days off for testing. So also by an increase in illness or use of illness. But a significant component of that has to do with days off for testing. Also new this year in this budget is an increased allocation, and you'll see this as we go through the data, for a computer replacement plan. We've not, we've frankly gotten out of step with our installed infrastructure and what's included in Mr. Turkowski's budget. We've, we want to be on a five-year replacement plan. And what has happened over the course of the last several years is we've allowed the infrastructure in the buildings, as we've had smart board initiatives, laptops in the classrooms and so on, we've, we've not kept pace in the, in the budget with an amount sufficient to support that plan. So we're going to correct that over the course of the next two years. And in this year's budget's an amount sufficient to begin that. We also have increased costs... Um, we also have increased costs for athletic and contractual, uh, in, in the athletic budget for, um, contractual and supplies. Um, those have gone up, um, in virtually every one of the categories distributed throughout all the sports. Um, we're also having increased use, obviously, because of our increased, uh, capacity. So, um, that's driving that a bit as well. This is what it looks like, though, when you split it up. So, um, in the instructional budget, uh, I, I just spoke, I guess, about, uh, interscholastic athletics and the computer budget. You can see, actually, in the grand scheme of things, um, there are relatively smaller portions of this, classroom teachers, regular instruction, uh, of the twenty-seven point four million dollar budget, uh, are the vast lion's share. Um, when you look at it a different way, when you look at the budget in terms of what it contains, again, this isn't any different than, uh, you've seen in other presentations, but, um, perhaps even more dramatic, this is a people business, uh, and that twenty-seven million dollars supports teachers. Uh, you see the tallest bars to the left are, um, salaries, the next set of, for certified staff, that's, uh, um, teaching staff, non-certified or support staff, secretaries, uh, aides and so forth are, are the next, uh, largest piece. And you can see the, the much, much smaller bars across the rest of this for things like contractual materials and supplies, um, and textbooks and equipment. To, if you drill down a little deeper into the, this is twenty-two point four million. So if we come back and look at this and just look at those tall bars, uh, that, uh, furthest to the left on this slide, that is, uh, of the twenty-seven point four, that's, the salaries are about twenty-two, certified salaries are about twenty-two million dollars. That twenty-two point four million dollars splits out like this. Um, so once again, general education, you see here librarians, occupational education, clubs, athletics, it's really all about, uh, classroom teachers. General education, uh, consume is by far, uh, the biggest piece of that, and spread throughout the buildings. You see here, um, that tw, again, that same amount, the twenty point four million dollars, um, um, looked at district-wide, uh, the elementary schools, obviously the, the greatest single amount, middle school and high school. If you look at it by program, so, uh, once again, splitting that instructional salary budget up, uh, by where those teachers are in terms of a program, you see K six classroom teachers is the largest piece of it, uh, the core areas, social studies, English, math and science, um, you can, you can see the, I'll leave the rest to you, you can see how they are distributed across, uh, the various programs. Are there any questions? Are there any partic, you have in front of you, I didn't go into detail in terms of a great deal of line-by-line detail, you have that in front of you in, um, in your packet, um, you also have some backup information with regard to the changes that we're proposing. Uh, do, are there any questions? Anything I could cover in greater detail?
Thank you, Mark. Board members, any questions or comments? I have to ask something.
Sure.
About the textbooks. And I realize you talked about it, that this is probably the highest increase we have, but still, is, is it enough? Because we've had so many presentations that talked about the need for textbooks for the math programs, we, you know, the, and, and we have the ELA initiative, on the other hand, we always ask to review textbooks, look at this one because it's outdated or something. So...
It's, uh, you know, um, probably what I would do is say this, I would, I'll, I will ask Mr. Pfeiffer to respond to that at a future meeting so everyone can hear the answer, but I would tell you that this is based on his recommendation. So, um, you know, I, 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 I do know that he worked diligently this year, and, and you've seen some of the results in previous meetings where he shifted money from one area to another, a change in emphasis, uh, to attempt to get, um, to be able to support this change. Um, you know, I, uh, we'll see how this works out, but I, he believes it's sufficient for this year, um, and we'll get another chance next year if it's not.
Okay. Don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not hoping to increase more even.
Understand.
But I don't wanna see an area being shortchanged because we're having program changes somewhere else, so that's where my concern is.
Understand.
All right. Thank you.
Right. I wanna spend a little bit of time reviewing, uh, budget progress and the tax cap, where we're at. Uh, we've been at this for a, um, number of meetings, and I think a little bit of review is important. Um, so the, this is, um, our budget progress to date. So with tonight's presentation, um, we've presented all but two, uh, of our budget packages. So remaining will be BOSI's programs and, um, the, uh, benefits portion of the budget. We're, we're working, obviously, on where we're at with that. So at this point, we're, we estimate, um, there's still work to be done, we continue to work, of course, but, uh, we estimate a, a finished budget of about eighty-nine point five million dollars, that's about a two point eight percent increase if there are no changes. Um, there will be some changes because there are challenges around the tax cap, not unique to Penfield, um, but certainly we're not immune either. So, um, there are a number of factors that go into the calculation of the tax cap. So, um, one of those is the allowable, um, the allow, the amount of growth, that says allowable levy growth, and that should be corrected, that's the amount of growth of assessed valuation in the community due to new construction. So there's a part of that formula, that complicated formula, that allows, um, for some additional levy, if you will, based on brand-new construction. Not reassessments, not your house was worth a hundred thousand and now it's a hundred and fifty, but new bricks and mortar. Um, in, in twelve thirteen, that was one percent, a one percent increase. Uh, it's been point six five, uh, for Penfield for the past two years. Um, and then part, the other part of the, the calculation, another factor in it, ha, is the tax, uh, growth factor. The allow, um, the allowable, uh, those are just switched, the allowable levy growth, um, was, has been two percent, it is the lesser of two percent or the rate of inflation. Um, and what you can see is that it's, uh, in, I've also included the rate of inflation. So in twelve thirteen, for example, when, um, the, uh, inflation rate was at three point two percent, the allowable levy growth was at two percent. When it was two point one, the allowable levy growth was at two. This year, it's one point four six. The calculation is, is designed, the tax cap is designed to always be less than the re, at least, no more than or less than the rate of inflation. So we've had two years where, uh, the calculation was less than, this year it will be at it, but it's at one point four six percent. This is just a review of where those last six years have left us. It's a one, our levy has increased an average of one point seven percent over the last six years. Uh, last year's, uh, rate increase was just under four. When you put those, uh, factors together for us, uh, in this year's tax cap calculation, you can see how it works. So, uh, we begin this year with a fifty-seven million dollar levy, uh, we're allowed a bit of increase, uh, for that tax-based growth factor, the, uh, point six five percent. Um, the amount of pilots that the district perceives are, are sort of neutralized in this. So, uh, you add the previous year's pilots and take out the upcoming year's pilots. Um, that part of this process makes sure that if pilots grow, your tax cap shrinks. If pilots shrink, your tax cap's allowed to grow up. It, it sort of nets it out to zero, if that makes sense. Um, and also, of course, that, uh, allowable levy growth, one point four six percent. So you worked that through for Penfield for this year. Our levy can grow, can grow by one point one million dollars or, or just barely over two percent, about two percent. That's a little bit below average in the county, this is what I know about, um, other school districts' tax caps for the course of this year. So, um, we're, uh, a little bit below, uh, the average for this year. Again, that's based on all those factors. Uh, predominantly, it's gonna be pilots and growth is gonna change, uh, what's allowable for the other districts, because we all, um, are using the one point four six percent in the calculation. That poses a challenge, um, because of this, sixty-six percent of the district's, um, revenue comes from the real property tax, uh, twenty-five percent from state aid and about nine percent from everything else. And the math works this way. So, um, this year's levy is two point, uh, there is, um, fifty-seven million dollars, two point oh five percent of that returns one million one hundred seventy-nine, um, thousand dollars. So we've seen that before. Uh, one million one seventy-nine is one point three five percent of the budget. So absent any other changes, changes to state aid, changes to other sources of revenue, our budget cannot grow by more than one point three five percent. Um, we cannot ex, unless we, uh, elect to exceed the cap. Um, that's challenging, and I don't think would be recommended for this year. So the question is, how do we get there? How do we make those numbers match? Um, and we, um, would summarize it this way. So the, a budget increase at two point eight percent is two point four million dollars. Um, the tax cap yield, um, that we just looked at is one point, uh, one seven nine. Um, that brings us to a tax gap of one point two million dollars. Uh, we've had some other loss of revenues, I'll detail in just a moment, of about fifty-seven thousand, all right, I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So really, it leaves us about a one and a half million dollar gap, uh, that we need to fill. This details the two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. You'll recall that we, uh, were using a retirement system accrual, um, that we, uh, discontinued last year, we unwound and transferred that money, uh, to the employees' retirement system reserve, so it's, that's not available. Um, we were using federal stimulus money in, in part to support this year's budget, that will be gone, um, won't be repeated. We're getting an increase in pilot payments, about forty-two thousand, that's already cooked into the tax cap calculation, uh, and we, on the governor's initial run, we're looking at about a four hundred thousand dollar state aid increase. So you net all those out, that's the two fifty-seven. So how do you fill that gap? Just to go back, it's that one million five that we really need to concern ourselves with. So, um, what we're tentatively considering, we've not, as you know, finalized this, um, in terms of working its way through the decision-making process yet, um, but we can close this gap by, uh, increasing the draw from the employees' retirement system reserve. That has consequences, um, you know, we're increasing our reliance on, um, on reserves. Um, we can go, we will increase our revenue assumptions by about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, essentially tightening our margins, reducing expense margins, uh, by fi, a half million dollars. Essentially, that just tightens up, um, the entire budget, um, will reduce, um, any availability of year-end funds, um, and increases the difficulty of budgeting, uh, into future years and reduces your flexibility. Um, we included in this budget, the three positions that I mentioned, or the two hundred thousand dollars is the three positions, the three FTE that I mentioned earlier that are included in the staffing budget, uh, we're considering eliminating them. That has consequences, or some portion of them, we're still working through this administratively, um, because that eliminates flexibility. If we need to break a class, if we have, um, need two-tenths of a, of a science teacher to cover a, an extra section, um, how are we gonna handle that? We need to work that through. But if we do those things, um, this adds up to that million five. So, um, with a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar gap that we still need to fill, there is the potential and the belief that this year, by the time we get through the process, uh, that there will be some amount of additional state aid. So we're not overreacting, we're gonna wait and see how that works. This is a tentative plan, we're continuing to work administratively, um, uh, to see if we can't find some efficiencies, uh, within the budget, uh, that would allow us to, and might require us to modify this. But for now, um, the board's seen this before, this was discussed at the March, uh, the most recent board workshop on March first. So, um, this is the direction, absent anything else, um, that I believe we'll be heading into. Um, just to come back to that, uh, discussion on reserves, um, you see capital reserves and reserves for debt service are the majority of our, of our reserves, we're using some of these this year, uh, to, uh, do the construction that we mentioned earlier. The retirement contribution reserve, about six million dollars, we would be, uh, with this plan dipping into that to the tune of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, per year. So that's, uh, enough in that reserve at that rate, um, for eight years, it's about one point three percent of the proposed levy. So we're, uh, with this single decision, uh, supporting, um, one point three percent of our, uh, or avoiding, I guess I would say, uh, one point three percent of additional levy. When that money's out, um, when that money is exhausted, um, then that money has to come back in some way on the levy. It can't under a tax cap environment, so at that point, you're looking either at an override or at further reductions. Um, overall, um, this is the picture of overall support of the, of the budget, uh, in terms of one shot or, or short-term revenues. Debt service fund, hundred and thirty thousand, we just talked about the seven fifty, and we've been able to support an, um, appropriated fund balance, um, or money move, you know, for leftover from one year and used as revenue in the next year of two million dollars. As the budget tightens up, that'll get harder and harder to maintain, will shrink. Um, and, and again, you're faced, because you're out of control at this point of the revenue side of your budget, you'll be faced with questions around other reductions or overrides. So that's where we're at right now. This is what we believe, or this is our best estimate of what that future looks like. So, um, you know, a, as we move forward, as those margins shrink, um, and as our expenses increase, um, we estimate that we'll, estimate that we'll be in a structural, a situation of structural deficit beginning in, um, seven, twenty seventeen. Um, this is based on assumption after assumption, so it could certainly come earlier than that. Um, if things break our way, if retirement costs go down, um, if, um, you know, if state aid increases, um, if the gap elimination adjustment, uh, that, that we've all suffered under is eliminated, it could be different. Um, but this is, I think, what we need to consider as we make decisions moving forward. Um, right now, in terms of sustainability, what I just described is sustainable for a little while, but not for a long time. Um, so we need to consider, um, both opportunities and mandates as we look at our, um, as we look at our future. We have begun, um, an administrative, um, analysis and, um, and, well, an administrative analysis of the possibilities of reorganization, we'll continue that. Um, we work through negotiation to help restrain our costs. The futures project and things like it, I think, offers, uh, a great opportunity for, for offer, both expanding and offering program and, and assisting in controlling costs. Uh, but we know that we have mandates every year that, that tend to, uh, make it more challenging, things like the veterans exemption. Um, the governor has a new tax cap proposal that will further restrict our ability to, to make changes, um, and things like the Common Core APPR, um, which, uh, certainly have an impact on, on our costs. So those are the, those are the challenges, that's where we're at, that's a summary of where we're at and going. Uh, we still have to do our BOSI's analysis, I've been going through that with the administrators. Um, I'll continue to do that, and we'll have that final by, um, the next board meeting. State aid continues to be reviewed, we just came back from, uh, a workshop on that. Um, that works its way through a political process that we'll track very carefully, um, and we're continuing to do enrollment and program and staff reviews as we move along. And we'll s, and we've started to gather assessment information. I would think that by the next board meeting, we'll be in a place that we can offer an im, an estimate of rates, uh, tax rates as we go forward. Um, conversation on education, where we'll talk about some of this with our public, has been scheduled for March eleventh. We've just closed the budget survey, so we have, uh, data from that that we'll be reviewing, uh, and discussing at that meeting. We've got a, oh, uh, we had a board workshop scheduled on March fifteenth, but that has been canceled. Um, we moved it up, actually, we moved it up to March first, so, um, that will come off. Um, we have board meetings, uh, through March and April, uh, the, the, but, the board must adopt on May twenty-second, and the budget hearing is on May sixth. That budget hearing's a la, the last formal presentation in a particular way, the three-part, uh, budget presentation, uh, is on May sixth, followed by the vote, uh, on May twentieth. We'd certainly encourage everyone to come out, um, and make their opinion known. Oops. So are there any questions? Did I?
Thank you, Mark. Board members, any questions or comments?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to just bring some recognition to Mark Sansucci, who's done a wonderful job, not only with this budget, but as you could see with our, with the infamous chart that shows the blues and the future reds, you do that constantly. We look back, we look at today, we look forward, and then tomorrow, we do the same thing. And as you do that, it allows for good planning and implementing that plan, and that's why we're where we are today, which is a good place, considering all the things that have happened, especially in the last four or five years. Tomorrow, we're concerned, but we're going to continue to look at that and make adjustments today to have effect tomorrow. But I want to say congratulations, but it's not necessarily, but just recognition that Dr. Sansucci has done a fine job with that of keeping his fingers on the tea leaves and staying in touch with the state and understanding and predicting and the assumptions that are in those models. Those are, that's excellent, and we can feel confident with his abilities and past performance and current performance right now. So thank you, Mark. And that's it.
All right. The donation, is there?
Oh, the donation, yes. I'm sorry. Thank you.
It's okay.
There it is. Mr. John Stegerwald has donated a full Tama drum set, including double bass drums, cymbals, stands, toms, snare, and drum throne. This is very generous. Tama is one of the, it's a great set. Carly would, would love to play that set probably. Percussionist. On behalf of the students, the music department, and the district, express our appreciation to Mr. Stegerwald. Really, thank you so much. It's an outstanding studio quality drum set.
All right.
Thank you very much.
So this concludes superintendent's reports. Thank you, Dr. Grimm. We are now onto board business, page three of your agenda. Financial items: renewal of contract with the Delphi Drug and Alcohol Council. The district contracts with Delphi for the provision of two substance abuse counselors, with one counselor located at the high school and one split between the four elementary schools. This contract has been in place for a number of years and is recommended for renewal. Resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to finalize contract terms and enter into a contract for services with Delphi Drug and Alcohol Council for Substance Abuse Counseling and Education Services for the 2014-2015 school year at a cost of $63,000. Questions, comments?
I just have a question because the fact that we have a counselor at the high school and one split between the four elementary just begs the questions. I'm sure we're covering the Bay Trail Middle School in some way, and could, can you just, can someone comment on what we've got at Bay Trail?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. One of the things we do have is we have our counselors at the middle level, and their, their role is a little bit outside of the nor, the traditional counselor, just kind of reactive. They're out in the classrooms, they're teaching lessons related to drug and alcohol programs. We have our health curriculum as well at the middle school. And when, what we're going to be doing, looking at next year is to try to formalize that connection between what is happening at the middle level and what is happening at the high school, so that we, we have an articulation of roles and responsibilities. Right now, we rely upon, when there are cases where we need some more intense counseling or services there, we can draw upon Ted at the high school or Diane at the elementary level as well.
Okay.
But we're going to try to formalize that. We've got the counselors available to respond reactively to that. We just want to make sure that there's a continuity of program that bridges from five through nine.
Okay. Thanks.
Good question.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I just want to thank Ted Aiman and Diane Mary for the outstanding work they do, being available, and also not only working with students, but also, I believe Ted Aiman recently had a workshop for teachers about, you know, educating them about, you know, what students may be using with everything that we read in the news. You know, this is just great to have them.
Actually, as a kind of a precursor or primer, in April, I believe it's the second meeting, you're going to have a presentation of the Monroe County Youth Risk Survey. And one of the nice things about, after we analyze that survey and we're thinking, okay, how are we going to respond to this? We know that we have those wonderful professionals in the Delphi program and the people behind it to be able to design our response to that. You'll see that in next month.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, I believe we have motion. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Adoption of the tax levy limit. Chapter 97 of the laws of 2011 enacted by the state legislator and the governor established the property tax cap on the amount that a school district's property tax levy can increase each year. This law requires that school districts submit to the state controller, the commissioner of education, and the commissioner of taxation and finance any information necessary for calculating their tax levy limit for the coming school year, no later than March 1st. The controller has developed a web tool that will allow districts to satisfy this reporting requirement via a single online submission. Based on the information and guidance available at this time, the 2014-15 levy limit for Penfield has been calculated as set forth below. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District hereby approved the submission of the tax levy limit of $58,585,391. As calculated in accordance with guidance set forth by the state controller, the commissioner of education, and the commissioner of taxation and finance, this tax levy limit represents an increase of 2.05%. And be it further resolved that the tax levy limit plus all exclusions as set forth in the law is hereby established at $58,585,391. This maximum levy increase after exclusions represent, represents an allowable increase of 2.05%. So may I have a motion, please, that this resolution be approved? Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. This brings us to policy review. Policies that are here for second reading. We have policy 5710 Transportation Program, 5720 Transportation Eligibility Requirement, 5740 Qualifications for Bus Drivers, 5750 School Bus Safety, 7617 Declassification of Students with Disabilities, 7632 Appointment and Training of CPSE Members. May I have a motion, please, that the policies listed above be approved as recommended by the superintendent? Questions or comments? Did we get any feedback from the public that anyone knows of? No? Okay. So all those in favor? Thank you. Seven in favor, none opposed. Appointment of Petty Cash Custodian. Due to a recent retirement at Penfield High School, there is a need to appoint a new Petty Cash Custodian. May I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education approves the appointment of Sherri Smith as Petty Cash Custodian for the amount of $75 Petty Cash Fund at Penfield High School? Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. President's remarks or presentations. Vote results. For the Capital Project vote, which was on February 13th, 2014, Proposition 1 passed with 759 yeses and 138 no, and that was the East Gym renovations and field lights. Proposition 2 passed with 763 yeses and 121 no, and that was for the district-wide security renovations. This board would like to thank the community and anybody who came out to vote. It is very important to always exercise your right to vote, and we hope you will come back in May, and that more people actually will come back in May to vote, so. Day change for the new candidate seminar. Due to scheduling conflict, the prospective candidate seminar will be Saturday, April 12, 2014, from 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. at the Holiday Inn Airport, rather than April 7th. Registration is available at www.mcsba.org, and that is the website for Monroe County School Board Association, or by requesting a form from the district clerk at Marsha Barrett at Penfield.edu, or 585-249-57022. And this, this is a great seminar for anybody who is contemplating running for the board. You know, you get a presentation there, questions that are, you know, that are answered. If you're considering to know what the job is about, that it's not only about Tuesday night, you know, at this table, there's a little bit more than that. Monroe County School Board does a great job in educating anyone interested, so we highly encourage anyone who would like to run for the board. And I believe at this time, the petitions are available, Marsha, at the district office. So for anybody who is interested, petition, petitions are available at district office, and, you know, you just need the required number of signatures for that. I also would like to report to the community that the board has done with the tours at the schools, and we really enjoyed them. I think that Alan McNiff and all the principals who had us just did a fabulous job. We especially liked the crawl space in Indian Landing. So, but that was a great opportunity for us to tour the schools, and especially during the day where you really, you know, you're not visiting empty buildings, or just, you know, seeing buildings in action and teachers working and students learning. So that was a great opportunity for us to be closer to what we always, you know, take decisions for here on Tuesday evening. And also, Dr. Grimm and myself received an invitation from Monroe County School Board for a meeting on March 12 with Deputy Commissioner Ken Slence. And he is coming to the area, and in order not to pack the room, they have invited superintendents and board presidents or designees. Both of us are available that day, and we're going to be able to attend, you know, and we believe there will be a nice representation from Monroe County School Board there. I want to remind the community, there's a conversation on education on March 11th, and also remind the board that there's a conversation on March, you know, on education on March 11th in the evening, right here at Penfield High School. So if you are available, it'd be great to come. And finally, I want to thank the board for being flexible with your calendar, you know, putting the workshop on the first, canceling the one on the 15th, but it's looking good, and allowed us to accomplish a lot. So that's it, you know, for president's reports. Any questions about all of that? All right. Thank you. New business. The BOSI's annual election and budget vote. BOSI's annual election and budget vote will be held on April 22, 2014. Board of Education will vote by resolution on the proposed administrative budget and on the nominees for membership to the BOSI's board. Nomination of Penfield representative to the BOSI's board. This year, there are three seats on the BOSI's board to fill. They're presently held by representatives from Easter Antacoit, Hanifolz Lima, and Penfield School Districts, Penfield Central School District. Each candidate must be nominated by the component district whose representative is up for election. The nominee must be a resident of the district making the nomination. Mr. Fred Shippey has served Penfield Central School District students and residents in this capacity. He has indicated he would serve again in a three-year term, and I believe that Marsha has forwarded his letter of intent to all of us. So at this time, the following motion is in order. Resolved that Mr. Fred Shippey residing in the Penfield Central School District be nominated as a candidate for membership on the Monroe Number One BOSI's board for a term of office to begin in 2014. May I have a motion, please, that this be approved? Questions or comments? Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Mr. Shippey. All right. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. And there being no further business, may I have a motion, please, that, oh, John, I'm sorry.
Just a brief legislative comment, if I may. Today, like many other days, is a legislative lobby day in Albany, and I wasn't there, but usually there's eight or nine large groups, and one of the large groups today was the Charter Schools Association, which had 6,000 students, teachers, and parents there today. And what made this unusual was something very rare happened. The governor came out and addressed the group, which doesn't happen that often, and in his comments, and I don't want to paraphrase it because I'm sure it'll be on the news or we'll hear about it, but he mentioned that there's a 50,000 student waiting list for charter schools, but he also thought that every charter school student should have the same opportunity as a public school student. So this is, this is just, makes me a little bit nervous with the cutbacks that we've received and the fact that there is a bill in the legislature, as we all know about, that would allow scholarships to be used in lieu of tuition for the charter of private schools. And I think we ought to just pay attention to it because it's very unusual what he did today, and I just don't think it's a great sign when we sit here with, you know, million-dollar deficits.
All right. Well, thank you, John, for keeping us informed, and please stay on top of that. Thank you. So at this time, may I have the more emotion, please, that the meeting be adjourned at 8:40 p.m.? Questions, comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you.